The February 9th, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Menor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 33, 13.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Jisling.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to welcome everyone to the February 9th, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Menor Exempted Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and the chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address the comments to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on the Time Warner Cable Channel 96.96 in Menor and Channel 96.22 in Menor on the Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Menor, Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Approval of the minutes? So moved. Second. Mr. Wilson.
I would like to note before a roll call, we discovered a typographical error on the organizational meeting minutes on page 342. The total for the petty cash fund authorization was incorrect. The copy we distributed to you did correct that typographical error.
Okay. And I believe we have to approve the minutes each individually?
We can do them all together.
Okay.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes. Hearing of the public for agenda items. The superintendent's report and recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I am recommending approval of consent agenda items 5A1 through 5A5.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, we are always happy to hear when our coaching staff is rewarded for their hard work and then passes this work ethic and dedication on to his or her students. Tonight, we get to recognize our gymnastics coach, Megan Mertz. To make this presentation is Mr. Casella, along with Mrs. Jisling. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson, it's with great pleasure that I introduce to you Megan Mertz. Megan is in our third year as our head gymnastics coach. In the time as our gymnastics coach, she's won the Northeast Ohio Conference Championship twice and was named Coach of the Year both of those years in the Northeast Ohio Conference. This past week, I believe it was, we won the Greater Cleveland Conference Gymnastics Meet, along with Megan also being named Coach of the Year in that time span. She has been sectional champ and district runner-up all the two years she's coached with us and has been the state runner-up now in 2014 and 2015. So our gymnastics program is doing extraordinary work and it's under her leadership that we've achieved those goals. Megan, just recently, has been named the 2015 State Coach of the Year by the National Federation of High Schools Coaches Association and the Ohio High School Athletic Association for 2015. So I'd like to recognize Megan, the first coach that I know of that we've had this high of an honor. And she was, as part of that, she was nominated to the National Gymnastics Coach of the Year. I think she deserved it, but obviously the panel didn't. So she didn't get that one, but she's done a fantastic job for our program. So I congratulate Megan.
I just want to thank everyone for having me here tonight and thank the board and Mr. Miller and Mr. Casella for their continued support throughout each season. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for what you're doing.
Congratulations, Megan.
Congratulations.
Okay, next. Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the agreement with the Hiram House for 2016 outdoor education for our sixth grade students.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of agenda item C1 related to certified staff and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters. So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my part of tonight's formal agenda.
Is there any business? Is there any business?
No, not unless board members have new business.
No. Legislative report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The Ohio Constitutional Modernization Commission is tackling the structure of the State School Board. The Ohio Constitutional Commission is charged with studying Ohio's Constitution, promoting discussion of changes, and making recommendation to the General Assembly for the amendment of the Constitution. The full commission is divided up into subcommittees to focus on specific articles in Constitution. During the latest committee meeting, the focus was Article IV, which was passed in November 1953, creating the State Board of Education, and it reads as follows: "There shall be a State Board of Education which shall be selected in such manner as for such terms as shall be provided by law. There shall be a superintendent of public instruction, who shall be appointed by the State Board of Education. The respective powers and duties of the Board and the superintendent shall be prescribed by law." The committee heard from Thomas Gunlock, President of the State Board of Education, regarding Article IV. Gunlock recommended that the state be comprised of five to seven members who are well-versed in education. He further recommended that these members be appointed by the governor. So that's the key, the change, appointed by the governor. It would be detrimental to the state's education system for these positions because political appointments removing would be removing the voices of local citizens who currently elect 11 out of 19 of those board members. So you can understand the control would be focused in just a handful of people at the governor's behest, in whichever governor that would be. Ohio School Board Association calls for all elected State Board of Education members, not just 11 of those 19. The State Board of Education has a constitutional and statutory obligation to set forth the needs of public education in its budget, policy recommendations to the governor, and members of the General Assembly. OSBA, School Board Association, supports a State Board of Education composed of entirely all elected officials. I could go on, and there's more information there, the bullet points in which OSBA is speaking out against this. What I would ask, if the board would support, we compose a letter and send it to that commission so we may express our disapproval of appointed members to the board as opposed to elected.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, resolution? Do I have a resolution?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
In addition to this, I may take advantage of the opportunity, if so, if it fits my schedule, I would like to give testimony to the commission if and when that opportunity does arise. So there's no motion for that, a voluntary data, travel to Columbus and speak out on that subject. Okay?
Absolutely. Sounds good.
Thank you. That's all.
Yeah. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
The next item on tonight's agenda is a discussion about the March 2016, March 15, 2016, 4.9 mil levy that we have been working on and appreciate our community for their support so far. Obviously, we have just almost a month to go, and it's very important and vital to the success, continued success of our school district. Tonight, Mr. Wilson and I are going to discuss with the board just the financial implications of that levy. So Dan, could you talk a little bit about what the 4.9 generates in terms of funds and kind of go from there?
I'll distribute the sheet that we passed out with the board packet, but the request for the 4.9 mils would generate approximately $8,600,000, beginning with calendar year 2017. As the board knows, we operate on a fiscal year that begins July 1st through June 30th, and the financial forecast before board work sessions leading up to a decision of requesting 4.9 mils in March was part of the five-year fiscal plan that would affect this coming fiscal year and school year 2016, 2017. So discussions are framed around $8,600,000 of annual tax revenue.
And could you clarify, I think one of the things we discovered in talking with voters, that some of the community isn't aware of how the Paradigm Building was funded, and that would be a natural question that anyone would ask. If you need money, why did you build a building? Could you kind of clarify?
Sure. So, and that's come out in a couple of conversations as we've been talking with a lot of our community stakeholder groups, but the Paradigm Building and everything tied to the Straight-A grant was that, was a grant. So it was very specific on what it could be used for. So the Paradigm Building was built entirely through that grant. None of our local taxpayer dollars, in essence, were used. Certainly, it's Ohio taxpayer dollars, but we were fortunate that the grant landed here in Mentor, not somewhere else, I think, for our community, for the greater good. But it is a grant and totally earmarked for those associated projects. But we've been talking and continue to have that conversation about that it was a grant.
And could you mention, too, how the grant further covered the cost of remodeling the high school media center?
Yeah, sure. So the grant, Mentor's take on the grant was just about $12 million. And Mr. Lynch, who's done a great job with updating the board periodically through the project, or monthly through the project, and periodically since then. So all of the renovations at the high school, 62 classrooms, two of our learning centers, and then what was the upper and lower center of the library was also completed with funds. Plus, the devices that our kids and teachers have were totally paid through by the grant. Plus, classes, online classes, plus...
Professional development?
PD, professional development through Paradigm, but also through our own staff. So it was really good for our system, and I can't... Everything that's been happening here, obviously, has happened fast because of the grant, but it was sort of the course we were on anyway, it just was accelerated. But it's a good question to ask, and I try to get it into every discussion we have about the grant.
Thanks.
If I may add, the, this state grant program was unique in nature and the first of its kind, that part of the criteria for being awarded the grant was that we had to demonstrate sustainability over five years. So not only the initial construction and renovations that Matt talked about, but the ongoing costs of operating, providing professional development, introducing instructional technology, has been built into our five-year fiscal plan as sustainable without an increase in cost. It was through reallocation of existing costs and some forward reduction. So it's an important piece of our five-year fiscal plan going forward, as well as the one-time opportunity that the grant provided. This first time the state of Ohio has ever required documentation, in fact, it will be part of the annual fiscal audit to demonstrate that we've executed over the next five years the sustainability commitment we made as part of the grant award.
And our first audit, I believe, will be in March, towards the end of March.
Then if I could just add one other thing. In anticipation of the levy request, and again, putting it in the context of our five-year forecast, in the event that we're not successful in March, the planning for the 2016, 2017 fiscal year, which includes the 2016, 2017 school year, begins in March, immediately after the election. It leads up to the presentation of the updated five-year forecast to the board in May, but even preceding that is the beginning of the finalization of staffing levels for next year, some program decisions, so that in the event we are not successful, and again, the fiscal impact aspect will be that we'll have to make reductions of $2,866,000 beginning next school year to spread the impact of losing that $8.6 million over three fiscal years rather than two fiscal years. So there'll be some immediate actions and needs for the board to remain committed to the five-year forecast and the parameters that we set, adjusted for the outcome of the March election. As you know, since my arrival in 2004 and the journey we've had and the ups and downs, we've evolved to relying on our fiscal beliefs to guide our fiscal management of the district. And the number-one and most important fiscal belief is that we focus on our largest expense areas as we build forecasts and execute budgets and make adjustments based on circumstances. And those four major expense categories are salaries, benefits, special education spending, and facility spending. And certainly, we will do everything. I'm still a fellow that will pick up a penny if I see it in the parking lot, but unfortunately, I can't carry enough pennies to equal $8,600,000. So we really have to go to the major expense areas, and the outcome of the levy will dictate very rapidly how Matt proceeds with structuring next year's school year program and providing the data for building the 2016, 2017 budget.
So what you're saying is those decisions are going to have to be made sooner rather than later because of the time factor of preparing for next year?
Yes, correct. Early spring.
I appreciate it also that the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee was part of the discussion and their insights and thoughts on the size of the levy and planning for the future so that we could make the best recommendation for what the needs would be going forward.
Yes, and thank you for acknowledging that. The finance committee has been the most engaged and active that I've worked with in my time here and really pushed, in addition to the board pushing, for me to sharpen the forecasting model, to try to move, if you remember the presentation last fall, from a conservative model to somewhere between conservative and moderate model. And in fact, during our work sessions, we presented best-case scenarios based on my historical performance, that a best case would be we'd see 2% less expenses than budgeted and 1% more income. So even when we arrive at March 15th and the outcome of the levy, we've built some models around that based on the guidance of the finance committee, and that's what the board used as part of the final decision-making to land a 4.9 mil. So the committee has been very engaged and very instrumental in helping us put things in the context of the five-year forecast and being recognizing our fiscal beliefs as we go forward.
And I would add, too, that passage on March 15th maintains, sustains where we're at right now. It's not, it's not going to be a windfall by any stretch of the imagination. It keeps us in the black for three, maybe four years.
Yes. In fact, thank you, Matt. This year, we, our budget commits to spending $5,300,000 more than we take in. Next year, the forecast would project expenses exceeding revenue by almost $17 million. So this money is needed to offset the loss of state funding through tax policy laws and state education funding policies to take us, revenue back up to equal expenses. We believe we've been very prudent, very fiscally responsible in managing our resources, but the dynamic has caught up to us after 12 years of, we're spending more than we take in, we plan for this day, we build up reserves for the tail end of the levy cycle, and that's exactly right. This is not to fund new initiatives or something different. This is to sustain where we are from a programming standpoint this year and still recognizes the commitment to reductions for sustainability of the first Straight-A grant, the continuing decline in student enrollment with predetermined staffing adjustments. This includes all those things in the numbers that led to our decision for 4.9 mils.
Now, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's been 12 years since our district has been on the ballot for new operating expenses?
That's correct.
And if you could just kind of talk a little bit about the uniqueness of that compared to other schools in the area and maybe give a little bit of an idea of what we can expect in the future? I mean, was that sort of an anomaly or, you know, what can taxpayers expect?
I think the, in the state of Ohio, based on educational funding policies and the tax structure for our state, the average levy will support four years of programming around the state of Ohio. So the fact that we went 12 years is extraordinary, and I would attribute that to some things that will not be reoccurring in the future. The first, I think, was the aftershock of fiscal emergency in 2004, where not only were we committed to resolving the crisis, and we were the second fastest recovery in the history of the state of Ohio, but putting in preventative measures to never get there again. And I think that elevated more so than normal the sensitivity to every dollar spent. And when I refer to the management principles, another one is there's management options to every dollar we spend. Another one is every dollar has to be focused on supporting teaching and learning. That that kind of aftershock of the crisis motivated us even more than we would in our normal fiscal prudence and stewardship of the dollars there. The second is declining enrollment. Like it or not, the people that moved to Menor in the '70s and '80s loved the community. They loved the school district. They loved their home. They loved their city services. And we're an aging community. We're not seeing the turnover to the extent that new families are migrating out from the inner circle of metropolitan Cleveland the way they once were. As painful as it was, declining enrollment created opportunities for us, and we've closed four buildings since the last new levy was in place. We've been able to adjust programmings. We've been able to adjust the initial impact of instructional technology. Our 10-year forecast on student enrollment shows that we're almost bottoming out. In 2004, if my memory's right, and I'm working for memory, so a subject of correction, my memory says we graduated about 860 students, and the incoming kindergarten class was just under 600. Today, I think we're going to, this year, graduate in the 600-number range of students, and the incoming kindergarten class is about 550, or projected to be that. So there's a little bit of final decline in enrollment, but we're getting to what will become the normal. The graduating classes will be similar size to the incoming kindergarten classes. That reduces some of the opportunities that we had to leverage as we were declining in size. So that, we've taken advantage of all of that, but without future declining enrollment, it's more difficult to leverage some of the fiscal management of the school district. And not that we've forgotten about the fiscal crisis, but I think we've settled into a very locked-in discipline in how we fiscally manage a district that's somewhat different than the traditional district. But going forward, the reality is that we have declining revenue. In 2004, that levy generated just over $14 million a year in revenue. By the end of, actually, two years from now, the fiscal projections predict we will be collecting $14 million less than we did in 2004 as a result of state tax policy changes and state education funding changes. So the long and short of it is, the monies generated by that levy have been taken away in other sources. So we have, while we've lost the opportunity from declining enrollment or will in the next five years, we still have to suffer with the consequence that we're predicting that even without any additional changes in tax policy or education funding policy, revenues will continue to decline. It's a bad business dynamic in any sector or any business, and when income's declining and expenses are subject to inflation, particularly a labor-intensive industry, that just doesn't work. Expenses go up, revenues going down. You only have a couple of choices, and in the state of Ohio, Tom referred to state constitution earlier in his legislative report, one of the core concepts, and this is for Bill Porter, the Northwest Ordinance of 1787, the first organized public education in our state, and determined we would use property taxes to fund education. And then in 1803, it was incorporated in our state constitution that during our statehood also prevents us from deficit spending. We can't print money. We can't borrow money. We have to have a balanced budget. That's required by the Ohio Constitution. So declining revenues, even flat expenses, doesn't work. So going forward, I would say we're going to return to the norm of districts around the state and see three, and if we're fortunate, four years of funded budgets, and get back to a regular cycle. So we've had a remarkable run, to the credit of the Board of Education and our community and our leadership, but we're now kind of returning to normal.
One of the things I appreciate most is that, besides the fact that most of us are long-term residents in Mentor and have a vested interest in the schools, but Bill and Dan have been here from that 2004 forward. So you have that historical sense of how we got to where we are and all the things that happened as you were trying to do the best you could for our community and bring us back to solvency and then go these 12 years, but it's, I guess it's time.
Yes.
And one of the interesting things I saw today, and Mr. Kamenicki can vouch for this, as you mentioned, that continuum and having that, you know, experience on the board and with the CFO, but part of it, too, is educating our own people as we put these things out and our own employees. But I, it had been 12 years since we've asked for new money, and I asked the staff at Garfield today, how many of you were here 12 years ago? And it was probably a quarter of the staff, maybe? And so they haven't been through a new money initiative either. So, and we know MTA supports and everything else, but part of it's just not taking our own employees for granted in that regard as well. It's just, we need to educate everybody.
And the one final thing I'll say is, sometimes people can't relate to millions of dollars. When we say $8,600,000, that has more zeros than any of our family budgets. I'm guessing, maybe not, but I'm guessing. And even when we say we have to reduce $2,866,000 out of next year's budget, that's not going to be achieved by turning the lights off at 5 o'clock or... or, you know, not turning on the photocopy machines. That's a very significant amount of money that's going to require some very challenging and difficult decisions, again, guided by our fiscal beliefs.
I think a lot of this discussion comes down to the level of service provided by the district. You know, as a district, we can do everything less expensively. There's no question about that. We certainly can make cuts that some people would call devastating. I certainly would put them in that category, but others may say, well, that's just necessary and that's a way of life. But I think if you look at successful communities across northeast Ohio, and you look at why those communities are successful, very frequently, if not always, the strength of the school district drives the success or is a major part of the success of that community. You know, I have been on the board for 11 years, went through all of those tough decisions to close schools and have people yelling and screaming at us and everything, but I do recall before that, I attended a town hall meeting during the crisis and standing in line waiting for my turn to speak and had decided to run for the board or at least put in for the vacancies as they came open. There was a lady behind and she said, you know, who's going to watch the money? And I said, I am. That's going to be, I hope that to be my job. And I think over those 11 years, myself, this board, people that came before us, and people that will come after us, have done an excellent job of building up a trust in this community. We worked very, very hard, very diligently, along with Mr. Wilson, Mr. Miller, the staff, to make sure that we get the biggest bang for the buck. We've been very creative in trying to bring in some one-time money, doing some things that no other districts are doing. Not just the technology part, but basically trying to create revenue by offering some of our services in our financial office and whatnot to other school districts. I don't know of anywhere in the state of Ohio that does that. So we've been extremely creative. We have tried, as a district, every possible solution that we could think of, some pretty standard, some very, very creative. And as Dan very eloquently mentioned, we've taken a lot of opportunity, we've capitalized on that, but those opportunities have come to an end. And, you know, we're back to that unfortunate situation where we have to go to the voters to try to offset some of those state cuts. If you look at the state cuts that have been made, we still have been able to make an enormous amount of progress in this district. How much do we lose, Dan? I know you've given us, and just ballpark figures, because I've-
Two years from now, there'll be $14 million.
But, but over the previous years-
Oh, yeah. Oh, combined, we've lost about $45 million since 2004.
So it's $45 million less that we normally would have received from the state, and we still didn't ask the voters for money. We still found a way to make it work. I think that's, I don't want to break my arm pat muscle on the back, but I mean, that's, that's a pretty excellent work. But we really do, we're at that point now where we're just out of options. And the only option that we have is to ask for a levy. We had great discussion on the board as to how many, what should the millage be? How high, how low? How long should it be? And, and probably took us two or three, heck, almost four sessions, I think, to try to come to some consensus on that.
Hours.
Hours, and hours. So this decision was not made lightly. It wasn't made in a vacuum. But the bottom line is, I can say with all confidence, it is necessary now, or we will start to be lesser of a district. And I don't think that's fair to the kids that are in the district and go to the Minter schools.
One of the voters I spoke with earlier today said that, you know, she's a graduate of Minter High, her husband's a graduate of Minter High, and their children are graduates, and now she has a grandson at Orchard Hollow. And, you know, for all of us who've been here a while, we want the same important opportunities for the little folks coming in the door that the graduates have enjoyed over a couple of generations, more, more than that, really. We, our history is a long and proud one, and we want, we want to be prudent with every dollar. There's never taking any of that for granted, but, you know, the staff of our district has worked diligently to make the most of every opportunity they could, and they, they give generously of their time for the great good of educating our community's children. So I feel proud to be here and, and hope that our voters will, will see the value in electing or approving issue three.
And that is, just so everyone knows, that is issue three. As you're, as you're going to the polls, issue three.
Three. Any other discussion or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yes. It's recommended financial statements for the month of February 2016 be accepted and placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second the motion.
I'd only note that performance, again, is tracking to expectations. Year-to-date revenues, 51.6% last year at this time, 52.5. Expenses are at 51% of budget. Last year at this time, they were 53% of budget. So we're, we're performing as we would expect through the first seven months of the fiscal year.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the investment transactions presented in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second.
I'd only point that, and again, something perhaps I should have mentioned in our prior discussion, our weighted yield right now is 0.56%. And as not a byproduct of state policy or state funding laws, the Great Recession of 2017 has harmed us significantly. Even though our cash flow's declining, as we're spending more than we take in, pre-recession, we were earning approximately $2,500,000 a year in investment income. This year, we budgeted to earn $200,000. So the economy in general has taken away since 2007, over $2 million a year that we had an opportunity to receive through legal conservative investing. We used to have weighted yields that were ranging between 4% and 6%, pre-Great Recession, now 0.67%. So it's another one of those contributors to having less revenue every year that none of us have control. So I apologize, I didn't throw that in sooner, but I appreciate you having to do it.
That's a good point, and I know we've talked about that over the years, Dan. Thank you for reminding us of that. Call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended that the inter-fund transfers presented in Exhibit 7-D be ratified.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the student activity goals and budgets presented in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve an invoice presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And it's recommended the Board of Education approve the 2016 rate renewals for our liability fleet, property, and casualty insurances as presented in Exhibit 7-H.
So moved.
Second.
I would only indicate that overall this year, we had a combined increase of 3.5%. We had budgeted 7.5% given the industry standards in casualty and property insurance entirely. We use the Jim Love Insurance Agency to assist us. Periodically, we will go into the marketplace and get other competitive quotes. This year, based on some experiences Jim Love had going into the market with other districts, we believed that our current program was very competitive with the market, and given the rates were significantly under the budgeted amount, had recommended this action. There is one modification from what we traditionally provide for you, and that is the cyber liability insurance. We are waiting to finalize a second quote from Travelers Insurance, and in the event that it's less than the quote we currently have, the $22,315, the resolution would authorize me to place that with Travelers if they come in. I, Travelers isn't mentioned, but place it if the cost is less than the $22,315. So that's one modification from past years.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And completes my items this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any unfinished business for, new business? Yes. I wanted to share with the board that I have joined the OSBA Northeast Region as an executive committee board member.
Congratulations.
And I'm looking forward to representing the Northeast Region and the Minter School District. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hearing it's the public, non-agenda items.
Let me speak. It sounds like someone 92.3. Pardon me for that. I want to say I support issue three. I didn't speak earlier, but I want to close with saying that I support issue three. Why do I support issue three? As I've been on the board now for eight years, and prior to that, I always supported the schools, but now after eight years and all the number of employees, and I say employees because, what else, family members? I have met so many individuals, administration, employees driving a bus, schoolteachers. They are vested. What makes the difference in a successful company? I recognize that. The vested interest that employees have. Now, not everybody is perfect. They have different methods and different ways of showing their vestment, their investment in the agency, the company, where they work. Yes, they come into work, but they're vested. I see it. I see smiles on their face. I talk to them. They tell me how things are going. I see them work. I see them walking around. They have a smile on their face. Do you know what a difference that makes? That projects, that, that projects really well for us. And I haven't met everybody. We've got a lot of employees, but those I have, they're vested in what they do, and it shows. The new administration, the new people we hire, they're chosen because of that, and we succeed because of them. The students succeed because of them, and they also succeed because of their parents. I have met parents over eight years that they demonstrate a high level of vested interest in their children. Now, not all do. We know that. But the ones I see that make this school great, they are vested. What a difference it makes, and I'm proud. I'm proud to know each and every one of these people at this table and those who are sitting here today. Not many, but you are vested. So thank you very much. I support issue three. I ask anyone who's watching this on our channel, please vote for issue three. If you have a question, my phone number is in, on our website. Call me. I will call you back. I'm not going to answer it right away because I have, I'm not going to tell you how many phone numbers I have, but that number, I will call you back. I will call you back. So trust me, vote for issue three, please. If you don't want to, call me. We can talk. Thank you.
I think that goes for any of us.
Absolutely.
Sitting here at the table, call us if you have any questions.
We'd be happy to answer any questions you have or concerns.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Will there be a vote afterwards?
No.
No. There will not be a vote afterwards. We do not have just-
Second for the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?